...of the Butler Community College Board of Trustees to order. It is April 28th, and we will start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
No one had, when I sent the proposed agenda with the first short exec session, no one expressed a need to have that. If that's still the case, then I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to remove that exec session, and then I've got one other discussion item to add.
So move to remove the executive session, the first one?
Do we have a second?
And I'll second.
For the not elected person?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hueslick?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. All that passes 7-0. Would also entertain a motion to insert where that exec session was a board discussion item to talk about the HVAC upgrades for the 700 building. I don't want to steal Ireland's thunder, but you'll notice that's not in the action item, so we'll add it to the discussion item if someone would so move.
I move that we add a discussion item on the HVAC system for the...
700.
700 building.
Second.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hueslick?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Thanks all. That's also 7-0. Unless anybody else has other amendments, would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as we've amended.
I have two items I'd like to brief to discuss just regarding YouTube video. I think, I thought we were all on the same page, but now it's like, I don't know what to make a deal of these, at least if we can talk about it for a few minutes.
Add a second discussion item then for that?
And then also, I was wondering yesterday about Augusta High School, what sort of issues I have to talk about.
Why don't you make a motion to add those two as discussion items?
Where would you put them?
I think we put them in Roman numeral five, right below. We'll do it right after we talk about the 700 building HVAC.
Okay.
And put B and C?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be my proposal.
I'll second your motion then.
I think we can go on.
Oh, sorry. Matt was...
Dave's second.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hueslick?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Sorry, I was trying to figure out this.
Oh, no worries. Okay. Barring any other amendments, would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hueslick?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes. Okay, thanks. All that also passes 7-0. Move on for public comment if we have anyone here that would like to comment to the board. Seeing no one. Dr. Viedy, RSVPs while we are...
Do you want me to do?
Oh, I did. I'm sorry. I'm the one that added that there, and then I moved right by it. Okay, so, board discussion items that we added, the first one, I'll turn the floor over to Ireland to talk about the 700 building HVAC.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I wasn't expected to speak tonight, so it's going to be short. No. On April 22nd, Simpson Construction with Gravity Works and Innovative Groups collected bids for the 700 building HVAC project. That project, as designed, came in almost a million dollars over budget. So because of that, I am not bringing a project to you tonight to approve. We're redesigning it and getting the cost down below our budget so I can bring it to you at the normal May board meeting, so. Any questions?
What was that original ballpark figure? Was it two something?
For the budgeted?
The original, yeah.
The original for that project was just at 1.9, and the 600 was 1.8, somewhere close there. So, you know, a total of, you know, you're probably quicker than I am.
3.7.
3.7, yeah, so. And our plan is to do both projects still. We're just going to design them a little differently so we get within both of those budgets, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Ireland. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Ah, sorry.
Okay, our second discussion item that we added, Shelby, you want to talk about YouTube?
Yeah, just the other day, we've got an email saying that we're going to take everything off of YouTube, archive it on Butler's website, no longer livestream to YouTube, just do it on Butler's website. My impression, that wasn't what we discussed at all, so I wholeheartedly want to stay. If we want to do both of them, I'm fine with that, but I figured if that was going to happen, we would have to kind of rehash what we went through before.
So I apologize for surprising the board. Rule of thumb, never surprise the board.
Microphone.
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to do that.
Never surprise your board, and we did surprise you. I had thought we would add this to the May agenda for full discussion and vetting, and we will go with the will of the board. When I went back and looked at the minutes, you didn't specifically approve YouTube as the venue, but I can see absolutely where you would have concluded, yes, that's what we're doing. So we can either discuss it tonight, or it will be a formal agenda item at the May meeting.
Is there a need to have it as an item? I thought we had already came to a conclusion that it needed to, that we had planned on it to stay public.
Well, I don't think there's a...
They are public.
Yeah, I don't think the proposal is to not have a livestream. I think that the proposal is, is what avenue the livestream runs, whether it's YouTube or whether it's BCTV. I wasn't thinking about that. To me, that's not a showstopper one way or the other, but I guess I don't know the difference between why we would want one versus the other, or what the technical...
One's just way more readily available and more widely used by people in general.
Easily accessible for people. Matt said it's easier to livestream to YouTube, but archive it immediately. Dave, after he made the motion, said YouTube. We said YouTube the entire time, so now to take away YouTube is, kind of defeats the whole purpose of the discussion, in my opinion. I really don't want to have the whole discussion again unless we just want to put on, do we need to have another action item in May, or do we want to just do both?
Can we just...
Does administration want the chance to present more rationale for why BCTV makes sense over YouTube, or are you indifferent?
That is beyond my wheelhouse. I would turn to Christina. It is in her wheelhouse, just to understand. It wasn't willy-nilly, and truly, it was not a stealth move. Cross my heart, not. But if you would just quickly say the rationale, and if the board wants to decide tonight, you tell us what you want.
Absolutely. Shelby, thank you for raising this question. Us moving away from YouTube and streaming to BCTV wasn't based off of the conversation that we had a few months prior about live streaming or not live streaming our board meetings. What it was, was to centralize all of our live streams into our BCTV app. The board meetings are the only thing left that we livestream that does not livestream to our BCTV app. We're moving away from the YouTube app for streaming, but if that's something that the board decides they want to keep, then we'll continue to do that. But we were just trying to centralize and narrow down the amount of applications that we're using in one single instance and have to support.
I'm against leaving YouTube either way, so.
You're against it?
I wanted to stay on YouTube because it's easily archival, both searchable, everybody uses YouTube.
It's not?
No, it is currently.
But it's not on BCC TV?
I don't know. I just go to YouTube.
It's livestreamed to BCTV and available. Yeah, prior meetings are available.
It'd be nice to have all of our things together for BCC TV.
I think you could have them in both.
You just do BCT20, and all videos pop up.
I think you could have them on the BCTV app and YouTube, correct? That wouldn't be anything super difficult.
They can be in both places.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Why don't we, I don't want to extend what's going to be a longer work session tonight. Why don't we go ahead and put it on the agenda for the May meeting, and we can have a brief discussion, find out more about advantages or not, and then we're in a position to take action if we feel like we need to. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Sure.
To clarify, in the meantime, until board decides, we'll continue to livestream it on YouTube.
Thank you, Dr. Viedy. Okay, so, the last one might be also more than we want to get into tonight, but I know we got the email this afternoon. Dr. Viedy, you want to just share what you know about that?
Shelby, my understanding is, attended the community forum last night. It was only later this afternoon that I became aware of the forum, and so we have a meeting with the superintendent of Augusta tomorrow at 1:00 to better understand how we can partner together. Can you tell us what went on?
Yeah, they're wanting to approve $55 million bond in Augusta for adding windows and everything to all of this, renovate schools, add new gymnasium, add windows, all that kind of stuff. Most of it's at the high school, like 38 million of it's just for the high school. And then during that, they're like, oh, we're going to get automotive, we're going to get all sorts of tech programs in the high school. And I asked them, like, why don't we just send the kids to Butler? And he's like, well, pretty much they've already partnered with WSU Tech. If the bond's approved, they've already met with him, and so that's the first I'd heard of it, and it's kind of caught me.
It is the first. We hadn't heard of it as well, and you can read the chronology of events dating back to before Thanksgiving and the conversations that took place. I did send you some supporting documents. I don't know whether it was miscommunication or what, but we're going to sort it out in the meeting tomorrow at 1:00.
Can I just ask one question? And please don't read anything into this, because it doesn't, there is nothing to be read into it, I just want to know the answer. Do we have to approve WSU Tech coming into Butler County to provide courses?
No, we do not. The tech colleges do not have service areas.
Okay, so culinary is not considered a tech program then? Because they kicked us out of Sedgwick County. Again, that's, don't read into what I'm saying. I really don't mean it that way, but that's always been my understanding, is that Sedgwick County had the ability to force us out.
We were excused to leave Sedgwick County because every Regent University has the right not to approve a request for the community colleges to offer courses in the Regent's counties. And since WSU Tech is part of WSU, they concluded they did have the ability to say, you cannot come into Sedgwick County without our permission, and they did not give it. Well, they took it away.
Right.
They're going to come into our county, apparently, just as a technical...
Tech colleges throughout the state, there are seven of them, they do not have assigned service areas.
Even if they're a part of Wichita State or whatever, Fort Hayes State?
Well, for that matter, the Regent's universities do not have assigned service areas. They function more on a gentleman's agreement. Kent, have I misspoken? So Shelby, 55 million, when's the election?
It's next Tuesday. So it's a...
And how's, what's the temperature in Augusta?
It's hard to have a, they should do all of these in November, because it's kind of nonsensical. You're going to have a handful of people decide whatever.
You'll have more turnout.
There's tons of flyers heading, tons of pro flyers heading our way, but we'll find out.
There's very key voices on Facebook that are very loud, both directions, but it seems to be like 10 total people having to say those views.
But it is. I understand why they're doing it, because now it's open enrollment in all the high schools, so anybody who's anywhere older, so they want to drag more people towards Augusta, then, but everybody's doing the same thing for dwindling population. But it's...
So I don't want to belabor the point, and I know we have more important things to deal with, but I quickly glanced at the survey results, and they were attached to the email you got. Cybersecurity was, if I'm recalling correctly, either the top area of interest or one of the top areas of interest for parents and students. We are nationally certified in cybersecurity, and we are the only community college in the state of Kansas that offers an AI track. So in my mind, I believe there's opportunity, rather than to make it either or, to make it and both, worst-case scenario. So that's the direction we're going to try to head.
Okay.
Stay tuned.
Any other discussion on that issue for now? Okay, now I'll pass it over to Dr. Viedy to RSVPs.
Will there be an, when will we get an update about that?
Pardon me?
When will we get an update on your meeting, or are we going to hear it, but in May?
No, you're going to get an update tomorrow afternoon by 2:00 or 2:30, or before the moon rises, you will have an update on the outcomes of the meeting. And in the meantime, on to wonderfully celebratory things, and to save you all at least 10 emails, who is able to come to the adult education success celebration, which is so incredibly meaningful? Tell me the date, time. It is May 8th, 6 o'clock.
We have a board meeting on May 8th. Oh, I'm sorry, that's April. Forget it.
I will be there. You will be there, wonderful. And where is it? It is in Andover Grizzly Den, and we will send this information to you tonight. We just want to know which board members will be coming to which events and who's willing to speak. So anyone else for our...
I probably can come over.
Great.
What time is it again?
6 o'clock.
On May 8th?
Yes. Okay, well, you have like six more opportunities. So now let's hop to May 10th, which is a Saturday, in the Welcome Center at 10 o'clock, early college academy celebration. I will not be there. Okay.
I have it down on my calendar.
Perfect.
Mary Martha's not going, I'm going.
Okay. Are you serious? Then you get to speak. Okay, you're on.
I'll be having it on my calendar.
Aaron, you get to speak then.
I did not say that.
We will duke it out later.
We do need someone to provide a log.
We what? We need someone to provide a log. We'll work on these two. You can only do so much. So, May 10th, tok ceremony, and if you come to that, you might get some delectable refreshments 2 o'clock. On which day? May 10th, 2 o'clock, Saturday.
Then what is that again?
The tok ceremony at the culinary... Oh, I will not be able to make it. I'm leaving.
Ooh, that sounds like...
Yummy.
It would wreck my diet, wouldn't it?
Okay, any...
I'll, I'll...
It'll ruin your diet.
Okay.
You never can go in the Redler Center and not...
Can you do it? Awesome.
Will the 10 o'clock thing be over with by then?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so I need to add that to my calendar?
We will, we will, trust me, you all will know what you've signed up for. May 15th, Nurses Penning, Dave, I have you down. Anyone else?
I will be there.
Great. Anyone else? May 16th, that is a Friday, 1:30, honors and awards ceremony.
I'll be there.
And I have that down.
Great. And the grand gala event commencement, 7 o'clock, Friday night, no rain. Be there 6:15. Yep, okay.
Yeah.
I do.
Yes.
Anyone else moving?
I'll be there for that one.
Oh, bless you.
I'll be there.
Awesome.
I'll be there for that one.
Kim, was that you?
Yeah.
Okay.
The whole group will be there.
Oh, terrific. See, that was so much more efficient than a string of emails. Correct. Thank you all. You bet.
And you put your pressure on it.
Yeah. We said it ends in high school.
Yep.
Okay, all good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Moving on to our board action items, the first item is the approval of tuition and fees, and I'll turn it over to Kent for that.
Okay, thank you. You have the, excuse me, the topic for action, we're proposing $5 across the board increase, and then there's also an increase of about 5% on the technology access charge, and that also is part of the information that you were presented, so I would be happy to try and answer any questions or call upon other board, other exec council members to pitch in.
Kent, you said the technology charge goes down?
No, it's about a 5% increase. It's on the second page.
Yes.
Shows that difference.
Why did we choose 135 for out-of-county residents?
Because we chose 130 last year.
I know, but why 135? What about like 165? Or, I want to, I know it's not the board's job to do this, but are we just like, I don't mean to be disrespectful, are we just pulling a number out of thin air, or are there studies that we're looking at, are there surveys that we're looking at, is that these numbers?
Maybe the process that we use, we try to, we look at a number of things, as I said in the, I think on the memo, you know, we look at affordability to the student, so 165 would not work, trust me. We look at how much revenue it's going to create for the college, and we look at, you know, our constituents, our county students. And the $5 increase is about a little over, not quite a 5% raise for our district students, but we felt that, you know, we need to have more revenue for operating budget, that's a given. We also need to take into account, are we going to get to a point where if we raise it too high, we're going to be discouraging students from coming in? So I think that's the wisdom I would share. There are other members of the exec team, and maybe Dr. Viedy wants to chime in on that.
You read my body language wonderfully. The other factor I would cite is competition. We do not want to outprice our competition.
And our competition would be Wichita State? Is that what?
WSU Tech primarily.
And then did we, did we hear that their fees are $272 a credit hour?
It depends on the program. So it is not one size fits all, and it makes it more challenging to gauge, but if our research guru would like to chime in, I would call on our research guru.
So they do have an average tuition of 272 per program at WSU Tech, but they have a very wide range. So on the low end of the range, this is what their tuition is published at this year, it's 135, and that's for a handful of programs, including accounting, business-type programs, things like that, and I believe also gen ed credits. But then as you get into the more technical programs, things like that, you're looking at the 200s, even $300 price point there.
Can you tell me how much the $5 increase would increase revenues?
Well, yeah, I think around $670,000.
And I know we were sent a couple of scenarios of budget. So if we raised out-of-county $10 instead of 5, then theoretically, we would raise maybe 1.2?
Well...
Again, I'm a dentist, I don't, I just want to make sure I understand what's going on.
At some point, again, I might ask Aiden to speak to this, but at some point, we're calculating right now that this is, this is close to being within the range of inflation, so we haven't figured in any what we call elasticity or sensitivity of demand factors. But if you start going from 5 to 10, you may get into that area, and I don't know if you'd like to say anything more to that?
Yeah, a couple of points, maybe. So as we're factoring in elasticity, right now, our percentage increases are around inflation, not too far from that. As you start to deviate much more than that, then that's when we start to consider that that might have a negative effect on enrollment. There still might be a net positive financial benefit, but there's other factors to consider. Another point I might make, just kind of the divergence of in-district versus out-district. Several years ago, they were similar, if not the same, and I think there were decisions made to continue to increase out-district, whereas in-district remained steady and or lowered. So that's why you kind of see a gap, is based on the history of that. You know, we certainly could look at different increases and changes, you know, per classification, but a lot of that's built on what we had the year prior, the year prior, and not trying to make too big of a shot, so to speak.
Thank you.
Aaron, my opinion, like, our, just our increases in healthcare are miscellaneous as well, over a million dollars for the budget, but we're only adding enough to generate the 600,000, so we're not even charging enough to generate our increase in expenses. So I'm more than willing to raise out-of-county slightly. We did it once before, we still had a decline in out-of-county, but it generated another 380 or something the year we did, it went up 9 instead of 5 a couple of years ago. But even last year, we cut in-county to $99, we still had a decrease of in-county students, so the price didn't raise demand even in that scenario, so I don't know. My perspective is, at some point, we got charged for our product, instead of just taking it out of the taxpayers' pockets to offset our budget. That's just my opinion.
I think it...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Could be helpful to hear from Jessica. Would you like to add your two cents worth?
Sure, thanks, Dr. Viedy. Well, as Aiden mentioned, I mean, we really do need to keep in mind the market and keep in mind what our students are willing to pay. If we do raise our tuition too much, then our students may choose to go elsewhere, and so that's something that we really are trying to keep in mind. Also, we have seen an increase in enrollment this past year, and I would like to keep on that trend, and so hopefully, you know, making this increase that would be along the lines of inflation would be hopefully acceptable. The other thing to consider as well is that typically, our tuition rates are set back in March, so that we can begin enrollment at the end of March. So we've been enrolling since that time, and our students don't have their tuition and fees right now. So, I mean, we've communicated with them that it's coming later, it will be in May, but it would be helpful if we were able to set the rate sooner rather than later.
Jessica, was there an increase on out-of-county enrollment?
Yes.
Was it convenient, it's, I was surprised, I guess, to see that we're proposing the same dollar increase for in-county as for out-of-county, which necessarily means in-county's getting a higher percentage increase than everybody else. Was that just to, just to be able to say we raised everybody the same amount, even though the starting points are different?
Well, I think we looked at that differential, and it's up to $31, $31, and it's been growing and growing. It was the administration's view that, you know, it's maybe time to stop increasing that differential at this point.
I was looking into state law the other day, and it says that the taxing, I probably have it wrong, I know we're subject to that, but the tax money from our county is to go for county... but the tax money from our county is to go for county residents. And out of county people are not supposed to benefit from that necessarily. It's worded in a way that everyone just kind of does it the same way. Although the state law is kind of explicit in how it says it, but all community colleges just charge, hey, we'll charge thirty bucks more or forty bucks more, I'm not sure that's how the state law is written. And it's mostly like, that's for the benefit of the county residents. Out of county students are not supposed to benefit from that. I've got something on my phone.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see that, because I've been in this business forty years and I haven't seen that.
Well, and I think a great source is Heather Morgan, so Kent and I can follow up with Heather who nearly has statutes pertaining to us memorized, but we're happy to follow up on that.
I'm, I'm kind of over the opinion that I do think we need to maybe do a deeper dive into the tuition rates. But since we were kind of put in sort of a little bit of a pickle of waiting a couple of months beyond what we normally do our tuition at so that, that admissions people and, and financial aid people can work with the students, especially on a retention type basis, where, where we're hoping to keep a higher percentage of students, that I would like to see us go with what we have published for right now, or what we've been proposed. But then really do a deep dive next year into, do we want to, you know, close the gap between in, in county, out of county, or do we want to increase the gap between in county, out of county? And what might the effects be? And, and I know it's, you know, I know we're, I'm hoping that we have, I'm hoping that our, our work that we're doing in bringing students in and coaching students, that it works in our favor and we see another trend or the trend continue with increased in enrollment, so those dollars are not as great. But I do think that, man, it's a, it's a fine balance, you know? And for right now, where we're doing this at a late date, especially with the students who are getting ready to leave in two weeks, those students who are, are already here and have already made the decision to come back. Man, it, you know, it kind of is a, a quick hit. I, I remember even when I was in college, it was the same way and we weren't talking the same kind of dollars that we are now, you know, so. But they still meant the same back then.
Dr. Beatty, what, I, I only ask this because I know that we're gonna have a very challenging budget discussion in thirty minutes. How, what would be the impact of waiting until the May meeting? And I hate to do that to you, because I know you've been waiting a while, but how, how much harm do we do by waiting two weeks to make this decision at the May meeting?
So the VPs and the EVPs truly have had thoughtful discussion about this. And it is a question in our mind of what the market can bear, so we don't upset the trend of increasing our enrollment. Because there is a direct correlation between our enrollment and credit hour state aid beyond the revenue from student tuition and fees. And one of the other factors we've got to consider is our high school enrollment. We have a really robust high school enrollment. And if we delay approving, that puts some of those high school enrollment processes for next year in a bind. And we don't know how to staff based on enrollment. So I, I don't think, I think I am speaking for the administration. We understand the budget challenges, but we stand by our recommendation as presented.
When you say high school enrollment, do you mean high school students that are graduating and enrolling? Or students that are going to participate in programs as juniors and seniors?
Students in our early college academies, students taking dual enrollment, students taking concurrent credit.
And then of our other students, how many of them are really paying out of pocket? I mean, they have tuition, I mean, they have scholarships, they have aid, financial aid. How many of them really pay that money out of pocket? Because I can see that if it was being paid through financial aid, it's, I mean, maybe they don't get as much extra back or something, but do you have any sense of that?
I don't have, I don't have that information readily available. It's something that we can get. I mean, we do have a, a good chunk of students that, that do pay out of pocket, that don't get scholarships and don't get their full financial aid. So, you know, I do think we need to be mindful of that.
I think I, I personally kind of zero in on what Forrest mentioned as far as percentages. When you look at this grid, it just doesn't seem equitable to have the Butler County students jumps the most and then out of district, a little bit less. And then, you know, even out of state and international be an even lesser percentage. If we're citing inflation as being our reason, seems to me that the five percent increase could apply across the board and still be put on the back of inflation.
Just a couple of comments on the out of state. We have a large percentage of out of state receiving scholarships for activities. So if we raise it, it's, it's gonna raise how much funds have to be raised? The international, some of the studies that we've done in the past show that they are the most sensitive to price increases. And in fact, if you use the elasticity factor that Aiden's predecessor researched and said was the correct, in his opinion, factor for that, raising the price for international students actually is counterproductive to revenue because it drives away international students at a much higher rate.
And our enrollment for international is pretty, a pretty small percentage of the population, right? So we've got, what, two hundred?
Little over two hundred.
Yeah. So what's that a percent of the total? Because I mean, our rates right now at one ninety-five are below what they were for years. We had from twenty-ten, we had two twelve, well, even before that, you know, two thousand and nine. We haven't been, like, we were way above two hundred and then we did that huge, we did huge drops. And so I, I guess I just don't understand the logic and what all's been done in that particular category.
Just to remind the board that I believe it was last year or the year before, there was the recommendation, I think, from Shelby, that we reduce the international rate.
I'm actually for lowering the international, because it brings a lot of culture to the college and we don't lose hardly, like, there's so many students.
And we have, we have just over two hundred students, but it is our highest international rate in fifteen years.
And if you look at the projected revenue for next year generated by international students at the five percent increase, it's nine hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. Nine hundred fifty-seven, eight thirty-seven.
If you did five percent on just international or on everything?
That's based on five percent for international. The revenue generated for out state would be one point four million for out district, nine point nine. And in district, two point two, almost two point two.
That's based on what's been proposed, or that's
Yes, that's based on what's proposed.
Erin, she's looking at page OB six.
So when you take the percentages of these increases, the in county is five percent. The rest are point three seven, point two six, point two six. So we really are raising a much higher percentage for the in county tuition. If you average those others, you'd be at about, you should be at about point three, which would put in county tuition would go down to about a hundred and one.
And that Kansas statute is seventy-one, two oh three. And I haven't looked at it for a couple of months and I'm not ready to have the knockdown drag out, but that's the one I was looking at today. I think it was also talking about in tax county money going to out of county scholarships.
Yeah, that, that really has, it really has nothing to do with tuition rates, it has to do with scholarships.
Going to out of county kids.
Yeah.
I get the sense that there is resistance to what's been proposed, but I don't get the sense that there's consensus on where we should go. I, I guess my thought would be, based on Dr. Beatty's comment, that we need to make a decision tonight. Is there a middle ground that we can agree that would allow administration to move forward? Ten dollars an hour seems large, that seems like a big jump to me, but something along the lines of, of the fixed percentage. Either reducing in state to match what we're doing out of state, which I don't know that that makes sense from a revenue standpoint, given the discussion we're gonna have at the work session.
What would, what would a five percent across the board?
Thirty-six fifty is what would be the, would be out of, would be in state, out of district, if we did a five percent.
Do we know anyone in our community college or tech school that has increased tuition? They've all increased it? Every single one's increased? Do you know what percentage?
I don't know about every single one. I know that I went, I attended a meeting a few weeks ago and the other colleges that were present did indicate that they were increasing tuition as well. And it was just, it was varying amounts.
And I think that's predicated on the fact that every college lost state aid revenue.
And you saw that we're, the Kansas Promise Act is vetoed currently.
I, I love that.
Do you love it?
I loved it that she revoked private schools.
Even though we lose
She revoked it for everyone, I believe.
Oh, she did?
She vetoed the Kansas Promise Act.
On everyone.
When was that?
Okay.
Last week? Oh gosh.
Okay, could I kind of make a, a suggestion in that? I'm, I'm with you guys, I'm kind of liking the, the five percent. Although I felt like that here we, we've been presented this now, I've, I've had it for what, one or two weeks?
We, we talked about this, each of the last, we talked about it in February, talked about it in March.
I would, I'm leaning toward approving this, but let's looking at during the course of the year and, and really doing a good job about telling them how cheap we are. But let's look at the idea next year of, okay, if we go up five percent, we're going up five percent, you know, in, in county, out of county, and make it a, a uniformity on the percentage of raise.
I would say, I, I don't care for that idea, because every year we, we try and talk about what tuition should do and what should raise to. But I'm, I'm just thinking right now, I would love to see it maybe go five percent across the board.
I would agree with that. Maybe leave international out of the equation, because I get what they're saying about
Yeah.
that being price sensitive and being culturally impacted and whatever. But the in county, in state and out of state, to me at least, should be consistent. The percentage should be consistent.
You know, the international rate, whenever you see the students on campus or see them at different activities, I always ask them, why did you come to Butler? And it's because of the tuition.
We always have nurses at church from Africa that come to do nursing. My personal opinion is do in district at a hundred, in state one thirty-five, international one ninety. Not pulling it out of the air, this is my sixth year doing this, but that's how I feel.
So you're saying what, say it again?
Just a hundred in district, one thirty-eight in state, and then just leave international, same as last year, no increase. I'd rather encourage more international students.
I think one ninety-five is quite a bargain.
Okay, that's just my opinion.
So on a hundred ninety-five, if we raised it five percent, then that would be, on that particular would, would be nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
Just under two hundred dollars.
Yep.
So Shelby, you think in county ought to go down and
Well, it's ninety-nine currently.
And just
It seems like the board's will currently is to take the mill levy valuation increase of four to six hundred thousand dollars in tax increases to out of county residents and we're gonna raise their tuition five percent.
For, not to, not to hijack the discussion, but there's going to be a reason why we might not want to take the whole mill levy increase, the whole valuation increase.
So there is an election this year.
Apart from
I know, but only one of us are running, but will affect it slightly.
And look at the inflation from the bids on the H-back system.
I know, that's why I want to raise. And if all the community colleges do the same thing, instead of nickel and diming ourselves in the bankruptcy, we're all too afraid to raise our rates. But I don't know if everyone else, everyone else is gonna do the same thing or not. I know Forrest had briefly mentioned doing this in two weeks, but I would like to see, before we finalize the budget and everything else, our new president giving us some direction and input, possible change tweaks to some things before that's all finalized, which would be that first one here, by the time we finalize this.
So are you making a motion then, Mary Martha, or?
No, not yet.
Could I make one other kind of observation about this? And, and just from my own perspective, being a parent, but also a student at one time. But when we were looking at tuition and fees, we haven't typically used a percent of increase overall. But what doing, what doing is giving everybody the same increases, okay, per credit hour, if you were a full-time student, your tuition is gonna go up sixty dollars for the twelve hours that you take. If I'm in county, if I'm out county, if I'm any of those things, it's going up sixty dollars. So we're trying to keep the playing field level for all students by not having a difference in tuition depending on where you live. Or depending on if you're out of state. It's, if it goes up, it goes up the same for everybody. Sixty bucks for a full-time credits. So I just wanted to make that, that's what kind of is, keeps it consistent for everyone when you use a flat dollar amount versus a percentage.
I understand the concept, but I, I don't think it necessarily should be equal between, I mean, the amount raised between in district and out of district. I don't know, I'm torn on this.
Problem with always using the same percentage is that you will just, the spread will just continue to get bigger between one and the other. And long-term, I don't know that we want that, but on any given year. I'm just, I'm really moved by the fact that we're gonna have some very, very difficult budget discussions.
I agree.
And walking away from a potential source of additional revenue or cutting it back when we're gonna be told how we're driving down our unencumbered cash through the course of the budget we're being asked to approve doesn't make fiscal sense to me. That's why I wish we could wait longer, but I, but I don't think we can. I think that would do more harm than good to wait.
And I would like, separate from this discussion, but I would like to see expensive programs like nursing that are maxed out with waiting lists. Maybe we need to have some additional fees to cover equipment that's a bit expensive program.
Let's say that, let's say that for a different
Okay.
Can we table this until we hear why we wouldn't take the whole mill levy increase?
How about come back for a separate special meeting? Because we'll close the special meeting and then go into work session and that's where we're gonna get all the information on the road.
So I think somebody asked earlier, if we raised it by five percent across the board, so just, and just rounding a little bit, it would be five dollars in district, six fifty out district and nine fifty out state and international, if you wanted to do that. I'm not saying you should, I'm just saying those are the numbers, if you take five percent across the board.
Except for international. Right, across the board, except for international. We leave international same.
If you want to, if you, it would be nine fifty for international. But, you know, I just gave you five percent for each category. It's five dollars five percent for each category. It's five dollars in-district, six fifty out-district, and nine fifty for international, out-state, if you chose to do that.
When we raised tuition for international by seven dollars and fifty cents back in twenty-four, did that have an astronomical negative impact on international enrollment?
And I ask, Dr. Viedecki, there might be an avenue to table it, this discussion, the special meeting, having a work session, and then coming back to, what would be the, what would be the appropriate mechanism?
I think we would need to amend the agenda to come back and to open the session after, I can remember, a discussion. Nope, that one, you would have to come back.
Two eleven.
Yes. I'm not sure you can. So if Karen stood for five, and if we raised in-district by five, if we raised in-state by six fifty, and left out-of-state and international alone, you still get a growing gap between in-district and out-of-district. And that would make sense to me.
I think I would still support the five, at least the five-dollar increase in out-of-state and international. I, I personally would, I would like to see the five percent across the board, with the exception of international, and leave it at the two-point-six percent or five dollars. I don't like raising in-county kids, but I, we've also decreased it so much over the last several years. I just, we got to get money from somewhere. Everything else is costing more. Somebody's got to pay for it. And at least then it's percentage fair across the board and keeps international under the two-hundred mark, but still having. That's me.
Does that in the form of the motion perhaps?
That, I'll make that motion. You guys can kill it if you want. So I would propose.
Can you recite what it was again?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we increase tuition by five percent for in-county, in-state, and out-state, and increase international by five dollars, not percent, which is the two-point-six proposed.
And I would second that.
So just because it's much easier to calculate and to have it in the record, and I don't think we want to raise in-district by four dollars and ninety-five cents, I believe we go.
Five-point-one percent. So make it a hundred and four.
So I think it would be five-dollar increase for in-county, six, six fifty for out-county, nine fifty for out-state, and five for international.
Is it possible to look at the anticipated credit hours of those different groups and give us an idea what revenues would be generated by those increases?
Yeah.
At a later time, right?
I don't know. I, I think he's doing it right now.
Just to confirm for the record. Is your second consistent with what?
Yes.
Can't just recite it back?
It sure is.
Kent, one question on that, on that motion. Does the, do those calculations end up making out-of-state higher than international?
Is that, as we're discussing this, does, does the point that Tom just made move anyone?
It does me kinda. To me, I would like to keep them the same.
We're charging an American from Missouri more than we're charging someone internationally?
Yeah, I'd be fine with having.
Or right across the state line in Oklahoma.
I'd be fine with having the increases applied to both. I was just trying to respect the comments they made about the international student and the, you know, so I'm, I'm not going to die on that hill with everybody's one that you.
I would go along with that if I had to.
To keep them the same? So I can amend my motion to, yeah, so I, I'll, I'll amend my motion to have the international increase be the same as the out-of-state in, increase. So it's by, right at five percent across the board. Everyone, everybody gets the same pay.
Mary Martha.
Do you still agree with that or no?
I do. I second the motion. Thank you.
We'll bet the Robert rules just to leave it, but I think everybody understands.
This is an ongoing, evolving motion.
Just a point I'll make in discussion. I'm not opposed to what the motion on the table is, but I do want to make the comment that just because we would raise everyone five dollars, and it's sixty dollars to Butler County students, many of those parents are paying hundreds of dollars in tax, so we need to keep that in mind, too. I mean, I'm not saying we don't do it, but I'm just saying, I think we need to acknowledge, and we need to acknowledge to the taxpayer that we understand that.
Can you, I'm so sorry. I didn't understand. Were you referencing the Butler County students? Because parents are already paying property taxes here.
Yeah, and some of them a lot.
Thank you. Walther Park, hundred and twenty-five thousand credit hours, twenty percent for Butler, twenty-five thousand credit hours that are taxed, fourteen million dollars more. I mean, it all shakes out differently because we're attracting different students, but if you just look at it like our kids, that's significant amount of taxpayer.
Yeah, I.
And then we're leaving.
I know.
Do we need to then, I hate to even mention the other part, we're still going with what is written on the technology charge as five percent also?
Ken's calculating. Does anybody have, I guess the motion ought to also address.
Do you need an answer on the.
I think we need separate motions.
Oh, we can.
Oh, that was more.
I didn't, I mean, with the board. Well, I didn't know if that was a spot calculation.
Yeah, I don't know.
Sorry, Ken, I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Okay, so we would be raising the in-state, out-district, a dollar fifty more than what we have proposed.
Yes.
From five to six fifty. The international, out-state, four dollars and fifty cents more than what we propose. At, if, if, if those actions do not decrease our revi, our enrollment, assuming that the enrollment stays the same, you would generate around two hundred thousand dollars more. Hundred and four, hundred and thirty-nine for the out-district, thirty-eight thousand for the out-state, and twenty-six thousand for the international. But there are big, big assumptions in there, but that's what we'd have, about two hundred thousand if those assumptions were correct.
Dr. Omen, do you have a comment on that? Darn it.
Shall we take a vote?
Keep throwing your hand up, Valerie.
Do we have any, any other discussion on, on the motion on the floor with respect to tuition?
I, I would like to just touch, based on what, or revisit what Linda said, that we're, Butler County residents are already paying property taxes for this school. I don't know that I would want to amend the motion of keeping the property taxes for in-county students the same, but if somebody else wanted to entertain that, we could have that discussion.
Well, let's don't miss.
We can, we can vote this down and make another motion where in-district or in-county stays the same or only increases slightly. I, I fully agree with what Linda says. I guess, obviously, I've been one of the most strongest advocates about keeping taxes low and not hurting the Butler County resident. I also, unfortunately, just feel like what I said, that we're just at a place of, we've had inconsistent inflation for years, not just one year, you know, so I, I, I feel like we're just at a point where everybody has to take a poll, and not just out of the area.
My solution to this is, this is a consumption tax. You choose to come here, you choose to pay by budget. Don't take the value, mill increase, whatever additional tax dollars levied on the residents that don't even go here, and you can be, do right by the taxpayers. The people who come here pay by budget. You can do both.
I disagree with that because not everyone got more assessed valuation. Some of that is new construction that we have had in the county, and so we've made a mistake not taking the mill levy increase all these years. I mean, the years I've been here, at least, and before, and we've seen what it does to us. Hopefully, if someone's home has not appreciated in value, then they pay the same tax. If we leave the mill levy where it is, they pay the same taxes they paid before. But I think we're being short-sighted not at least accepting the, the assessed valuation increase.
On the opposite, I, I think we're balancing our budget on the back to the mortgage. Just because their value increased, even though they may not get increasing wages, we get more money for the college program.
But they have the right to protest that with the appraiser.
Yeah, but we, we set the dollar value that they're taxed. We, we levy taxes on them.
Thank you. Point of order.
For, for the meeting we talked about, the, the tax rate, but.
So it would be helpful to repeat the motion so you all understand what it is.
Time out. Let's, I, I'm kind of thinking we need to vote down this motion, make a new motion that, that you were, but also include the technology change rates.
We can do a separate.
No, we need a separate.
Okay, okay.
Separate.
Okay, so just, do you want me to say it again for clarity? It would be to increase the in-county tuition by five dollars, in-state increased by six fifty, out-state by nine fifty, and international by nine fifty, for roughly five percent across the board, but not exactly.
I second it.
Trustee Good.
Yes.
Trustee Brungart.
Yes.
Trustee Jolly.
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes.
Yes.
Trustee Huesley.
Yeah.
Trustee Sheer.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven oh. Thanks all for that discussion. Tom, would entertain a motion to approve the technology charge as it has been recommended, at least to get the discussion rolling?
I move that we.
I'd like to ask a question real quick. On the nursing, don't they get charged a fee anyway for all their nursing supplies?
Well, a lot, a lot of courses get charged fees.
Yeah.
Welding, nursing.
All of them. Okay.
And that's different from the technology.
Technology.
That's correct.
Okay.
This isn't across the board, depending on how many credit hours you take.
Okay.
I move that we approve the recommended rates for the technology charge as stated at five percent.
I second it.
I'm sorry, is there?
I don't think it's exactly five percent.
I don't think there's a five percent.
Five dollars.
Did you say as presented?
As presented.
Presented.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the technology charge?
Trustee Good.
Yes.
Trustee Brungart.
Yes.
Trustee Jolly.
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes.
Yes.
Trustee Huesley.
Yes.
Trustee Sheer.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven oh. Thanks, everybody. So moving on to our other agenda item, and the board has been presented with a copy of the contract and a summary of the terms. At this point, would entertain a motion to approve that contract as has been circulated.
I move that the board approve an employment contract with the next president of Butler Community College.
Second.
Trustee Good.
Yes.
Trustee Brungart.
Yes.
Trustee Jolly.
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes.
Yes.
Trustee Huesley.
Yes.
Trustee Sheer.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven oh, and I'll have a, a statement here that will go with everybody. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we want to thank Angela Provart with the Poly Group for her guidance throughout the search process. We also want to thank the members of the screening committee and everyone who took time to attend the candidate forums and provide feedback. We received feedback from about sixty to ninety people for each candidate, and in all candor, the feedback varied widely. Widely cannot be expressed enough. Different groups felt strongly about different candidates, and because of that, I think we expect that some will be disappointed by the board's choice. Please understand that everyone's feedback was considered. Ultimately, the board viewed each candidate positively, and we were aligned in how to move forward. With that backdrop, we are happy to announce Dr. Tamara Daniel as the next president of Butler Community College. Yes, and I think Dr. Dr. Daniel is, Dr. Daniel is waiting in the virtual background to, to hopefully join us.
Dr. Daniel?
We're still in the virtual background.
Yes.
Oh.
There she is.
Hey, hey.
We can't hear you.
No sound yet.
No sound yet.
Can you hear us? Doesn't show. Can you, can you tell?
We're working on it on our end.
No, I think she's frozen. Or has an incredible ability to keep herself still.
And not blink.
Yeah.
There she is.
Oop, she's unfrozen.
Do we have a phone number? We just give her. Jennifer, I'll just, we'll just put her on speaker right now. Do you think you have it? Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Daniel, I'm going to try to give you a call on my mobile, and we can just patch you in through, through speakers. So if you see a, a three-one-six number come through, it's not spam.
You might turn your volume up.
Yeah. It is maxed out.
Your call has been forwarded to voicemail. The person you're trying to reach is not available.
Oh, let's try that again. Did I get the right? Okay, let's try again. Can we hear? Dr. Daniel, are you there? Daniel, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Oh, got an echo.
Yes. Oh, okay. See if that's better.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yay, that was great. Challenge is always an opportunity.
Yes, welcome and glad you could join.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I just want to first start by expressing my sincere gratitude to the Board of Trustees for their confidence and trust in me. It is really truly an honor to be selected as the next president of Butler Community College. I'm super excited to work alongside all of our outstanding employees, our students, and our new partners. I'm truly inspired by the incredible work that's already being done, and I'm very eager to support and amplify that momentum. You know, I cannot wait to meet more of you, to hear your stories, learn about your experiences, and listen closely, listen closely to your hopes and dreams for Butler's future. I believe that true leadership begins with listening, and I am very committed to building strong relationships. I believe that tree leadership begins with listening, and I am very committed to building strong relationships across our campuses and our community. Together, we're going to innovate and collaborate and ensure that students always remain at the center of everything we do. I am fully dedicated to honoring Butler's very proud, long legacy, and I look forward to working with each of you as we develop the next chapter of Butler's story, and help them to carry excellence, opportunity, and students success. And so, once again, I just thank you for this incredible opportunity, and I'm super excited for what lies ahead. Thank you.
We didn't mention in the motion that Dr. Daniel's contract... We didn't mention in the motion that Dr. Daniel's contract starts on June 23rd. Oh, I don't want to meet that. So we will see her probably around... Getting her feedback. Occasionally between now and then, as, as she and her husband come into town to look for housing, but she'll be here full-time on the 23rd. Dr. Daniel, you are welcome to stick around for our work session, although we're going to have a exec session between now and then.
Sure. I will be happy to do that.
And I think...
I will get sound on the Zoom.
Yes, and I guess you're hearing us just fine, so that's, that's better.
I am. That's good. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Take care.
Take care. All right.
Okay. Oh, yes, please do.
Always speak from accuracy, and when you don't, correct it as soon as you can. So I am correcting the fact that technical colleges do indeed have assigned service areas. WSU Tech's assigned service area is Sedgwick County. And if we were to have a program that is desired, and we can offer it, we can deny their coming in. I have also said, what if we don't have the program? I'm waiting on that answer, but I will get it. Oh, Heather.
If we do not off, if we do not offer the program, we have to let them offer it. I heard that directly from Heather Morgan, so...
Thank you very much. So now you are acting on fact, and we will keep you updated.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Piatek. I think that is all of our action items for tonight, are the last item of our special meeting agenda is to recess into exec session for discussions regarding negotiations. The language for that motion is on the back page of the agenda packet, if someone would like to make it.
Erin?
I think I have the right one. Yeah, that one right there?
Yes, sir.
I move that the board recess into executive session to discuss negotiations and non-elected personnel pursuant to the open meetings exceptions for said matters, and that the board, Jackie Piatek, Shelley Stolt, Bill Rinconbaugh, and Kent Williams be included. The meeting will resume in the Dankert Trustee Board Room within 45 minutes of its beginning. I don't know that I said that right, but...
And I'll second.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Huesley?
Yes.
Trustee Sheer?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone, for, for being here. We do not have anything on our agenda after the exec session, except returning for the work session, so...
Sandwiches?
Yeah, oh, and, for, yeah, there's some sandwiches in the fridge to take with us into the exec session. And we'll, we'll note the times that we go in and out, once we come out.